Let's go, let's go. Commissioner Ryan. All right, let me get my, let me get my. All right, let me get. If you may have to keep me on point with my addendums today, so. You might have to keep me on point with my addendums.
Okay.
This is, this is. Where is?
The red helps, because the red hardly does that.
I know, but now I'm looking for my, my little guide. We're ready to rock them all here. Yes, sir. Me, he's a bully. Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to the City of Dania Beach Regular Meeting on February the 11th, 2025. It is 7:27 PM and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Davis. Vice Mayor Salvino.
Oh, here.
Commissioner Llewellyn. Commissioner Romoli.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney E. Boots.
Here.
Chair, Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, City Clerk. At this time, we are going to have a moment of silence if everyone could please bow your heads. Thank you. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're on to Item Three, Presentations and Special Event Approvals. We have none for this evening, so. We have a request for a proclamation approval for Mr. George Hadley Day, sponsored by me.
Make the motion, it's okay.
You have a motion from Vice Mayor, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Llewellyn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it passes, we have approved Mr. George Hadley Day. And now we are on to, well, let's give it a hand, let's have a good time. We're very excited to read that proclamation this evening. Item 4.1, we have National GovComs Day, February 21st, 2025, from Marketing and Communications.
You got the proclamation?
All right, we have Nette Rodriguez and Suzette Rodriguez are the Sister Communications Team is in the building. Whereas the role of government communications professions is to inform, educate, and engage their communities. And whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved. And whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement in civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions. And whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have freedom to make their voice heard. And whereas the City of Dania Beach is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Dania Beach Commission, I Joyce L. Davis, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 21, 2025 as National Government Communicators Day. In the City of Dania Beach, and encourage all residents to thank the members of Marketing and Communications Department who have dedicated their careers to ensure the City of Dania Beach has effective impactful and successful communication strategies that resonate and are relevant. So thank you to our Marketing and Communications Team. Would you like to come up and accept your proclamation? Everyone, please give them a hand. We need, we need someone to take a picture of us this time.
There's Kathy. We gotta back up, we gotta back up.
And now we have Item 4.2, Black History Month, February 2025, sponsored by your mayor, Joyce L. Davis. Whereas Black History Month is a national observance celebrating contributions of African-American people in their struggles for freedom and equality and their part in the development of our nation's history. And whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter "Goodwin" Wilson, noted, noted black scholar and son of former enslaved individuals, initiated the celebration of Negro History Week, which corresponded with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And in 1976, the celebration was expanded to the entire month of February. And whereas Black History Month, we recognize the many contributions and achievements made by black Americans to the City of Dania Beach and to the United States economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the 2025 month theme African-Americans and Labor focuses on various profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect the collective experiences of black people. And whereas the City of Dania Beach honors all of its African-American mayors and elected officials, including the first African American, African-American mayor, the late Mayor Chester A. Byrd, and its first African-American female mayor, Mayor Bobby H. Grace. And its currently serving African-American mayor, Mayor Joyce L. Davis. And whereas the City of Dania Beach also recognizes the late Mr. George Hadley, who dedicated, who dedicated many years of his life from a student to an adult with exemplary service to Jackson's Ice Cream Parlor and Restaurant from 1958 until his passing, serving the Dania Beach community with steadfast loyalty and pride. And whereas we recognize that black history is American history, not only during the month of February, but throughout the year. It is important that we know our history to beneficially meet the challenges of now and into the future. Now therefore, on the behalf of the City of Dania Beach Commission, I Joyce L. Davis, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month and February 24th, 2025 as Mr. George Hadley Day. In the City of Dania Beach, Florida, and encourage all citizens of Dania Beach to recommit themselves to an ideal America where equality and justice will always prevail and to the principles of love, wisdom, compassion toward one another. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Mary, Ms. Linda to come forward and Mr. Jerry Hadley to come up. And we urge, and Ms. Mary is going to read, and, and Ms. Bobby Grace, former mayor Bobby Grace to come up. And Ms. Mary is going to read a special tribute to George Hadley.
We would like to thank you all for granting us our wish, first of all. And we give honor to you, Mayor Davis, and all of your commissioners in your respective places, city manager, city clerk. So this is our proclamation honoring George Hadley. Proclamation honoring George Hadley and celebrating African-American Employee Day at Jackson's Ice Cream Parlor and Restaurant. Whereas Linda Udell-Zachim learned the vital importance of justice, equality, and community from her father Monroe Udell and has continued his legacy by advocating for the welfare of local black residents, customers. And whereas Jackson's Ice Cream Parlor and Restaurant has long been a proud supporter of the underprivileged employees, with Congressman Alcee Hastings acknowledging the establishment's participation in a minimum wage initiative where President Barack Obama famously mentioned Jackson's in several speeches as a model of support for working class Americans. And whereas Linda and her management team, along with MRM Research that led to this hit and jam, recognizing the immense contributions of employees like George Hadley and other African-Americans like Ricky Holloway, who played a crucial role in the success of the Udell family business. And whereas on February 24th, 2024, Linda Udell-Zachim, Jerry Smith, and Mary Russ-Milligan agreed to officially name Jackson's African-American Employee Day in honor of George Hadley, recognizing his dedication and exceptional service to the company and the community. And whereas George Hadley worked at that takeout window of Jackson's from 1958 as a high school student until his passing on May 28th, 1996, providing exemplary service to the community with steadfast loyalty and pride. And whereas George Hadley, as a black man in a racially segregated society, defied the barriers of his time by serving ice cream from a window to those denied entry into that white-owned restaurant, enduring hardship, including being denied use of the restroom inside. Yet, he remained unfailingly dedicated to his work and joy it brought to the community. And whereas George's friendly demeanor, quiet strength, resilience, and dignity in the face of discrimination have left a lasting impact on those who knew him and served as a powerful reminder of the humanity and integrity that cannot be diminished by prejudice. And whereas Monroe Udell trusted and mentored George Hadley, and together they created personal cherished lasting memories. Whereas this tribute reflects Jackson's Ice Cream Parlor and Restaurant deep commitment to honoring Black History Month, recognizing the contributions of black employees, and commemorating the legacy of George Hadley while also celebrating the enduring impact of Monroe Udell, the king of ice cream in the City of Dania on his birthday, February 24th. Now therefore, we declare and honor the memory of George Hadley, whose contributions to Jackson's Ice Cream Parlor and Restaurant embody the spirit of resilience, justice, and equality for all. Let this proclamation stand as a testament to his life, work, and enduring legacy of Jackson's Ice Cream Parlor and Restaurant commitment to community equality and excellence. Thank you all.
Thank you for that powerful proclamation. And if we could all come up for a photo and, and accept the proclamation on both beheads, thank you.
You say go up for a photo?
Take a picture. So if you will let me do the honors, because the city manager has given me another family. And I've had this family since 2015, and I cherish them also. And Linda shared her father with me all those years. We never had harsh words, but nothing but friendship. I applaud my fellow commissioners for the job that you're doing, recognizing this month. This is going to be my seventh Black History event and honorary this month. And I'm telling you, James, I'm running out of outfits. And so if you see, if you see the trucks coming, just blame it on Black History Month, I want you to know. And I'm gonna ask my, because George Hadley was an alumni of Addox High School, as I am, I'm gonna ask the Addox alumnis and graduation to please come up.
And I am too.
Stay up here and then, and you're, yeah.
We have all.
You all come down here and then we'll stay up here, so it's not so crowded.
Hi.
Hi, Suzette.
Suzette congratulated on your proclamation.
Me neither.
The other what?
Come, come down, come down.
All the way down, all the way.
Oops.
Squishy did, baby.
There's more.
You don't wanna stand next to your wife?
The other wife.
Jackson's the first restaurant we went to.
I think you should say so.
You're up, Bobby. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I worked for Monroe when I was fifteen. You know that, right? I worked for Monroe when I was fifteen.
Yes, Vice Mayor is letting us know that he worked for Monroe Udell since he was fifteen years old. So we have great history, great unity in the city of Dania Beach, and we thank you all for coming to celebrate Black History Month and George Hadley Day. Next up, we have administrative reports. If we could be seated, it is time for our Madam Manager to give her report, please.
Thank you, and and thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, great citizens of Dania Beach that are here with us and watching at home, and our city team. As we continue to mitigate the the challenges regarding flooding effects and king tide and heavy heavy rains throughout the city, we have broken round, we have broken ground on the latest project that we're doing at the beach, coordinating with the opening of Lucky Fish. So we're very, very excited. This is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar invested it invested that is budgeted in public services as part of our ongoing proactive investment of the roads. And I gotta say, our our mayor is at the beach every single day, and 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 our beach has really experienced a night and day. I know also that Commissioner Ryan, with his love for voting, if you haven't been to the beach, you gotta check out that campus. It's truly remarkable, and it has done a to- there's a total renaissance at the beach. We're very excited about that. On Thursday, January the twentieth, January the thirtieth, we had our Employee Wellness Fair, backed by popular demand. We had over one hundred and ten employees participate, over twenty-five vendors. It was truly a remarkable event, and we continue to enhance and augment these programs that we offer to our city team. We are on a mission to augment our communication. It it's it's one of the platforms our mayor ran on, and one of the first things that we did after she was elected is what cool initiatives can we come up with to further communicate and augment how we are engaging our residents? So we are going to be unveiling a really cool program. It's a really, it's called Mayor on the Move, and the lead person is going to be our marketing and our PIO department. So basically, you're going to see our mayor in a hard hat, you're going to see her by Lucky Fish, you're going to see her at C.W. Thomas. She is not camera shy at all. And basically, these videos are going to be produced, and they're going to be out there in the community as another way of us engaging you and communicating to you the progress of all these multiple projects that we have going on citywide. So we're very, very excited about that. We we will be in Tallahassee, if not next week, because we saw that there might be, we might have to pivot with Tallahassee. But wherever we are, we're going to be coming live to you and making sure that we're communicating to you what we're doing. Our strategic master plan update process has commenced. Myself, our deputy city manager, and all the department directors, including our Chief of Fire and Chief of Police, we participated in all-day endeavor this past Friday, and I know that all our elected officials have had their one-on-one with Lyle. And there's also gonna be a part where there's community engagement. So we really look forward to taking our adopted strategic plan of twenty twenty and amending it and bringing in new priorities and new it is new initiatives. There is great progress in the construction at C.W. Thomas Park. And if you go by, you could see it. This is just a picture of all, as you could see, the rebar that's up, we're pouring concrete, and basically, the transformation of this park is gonna be remarkable. And we are, we are on budget and on time to complete this project at the end of this calendar year. So this is very, very exciting. The Mulliken Park construction project is well underway, and I've included a photo of that here as well. And here it is. This is attributed to a grant that we were able to get in Tallahassee. It's going to be beautiful. The whole park, and a very lovely part of our community, is gonna be totally transformed, new walking path, new playgrounds, pavilion. It's gonna be remarkable. So we're gonna be breaking, we're gonna be cutting the ribbon on this in a couple months. So stay tuned for Mulliken Park. Excuse me. On Monday, February the third, I completed a walkthrough of the newly renovated Nyberg-Swanson Historic House with key members of our team, the president of Historic Society, Joanna Garnett, that's here, Ms. Kay, our former mayor. It it's, you guys are gonna be blown away by the before and after of this beautiful, beautiful facility in the epicenter of our city. The Nyberg-Swanson House is is a remarkable historic structure in our city. We are completing the final details, because on February twenty-fifth, we invite you all to come see this really renovated house. That's going to be our ribbon cutting. Right now, we're working on the details. Callie's doing a fantastic job. Wait till you see the landscaping. I know since we met, you you're seeing the transformation, and it's gonna be truly, truly remarkable. We're excited about that. We are preparing, we actually, we were preparing when we were putting this report together, but we had another remarkable Dania After Dark. This is a very intimate setting. There was two hundred people there versus the five thousand that we had for Oktoberfest. Just really intimate and really unique, and we're gonna continue to build on the Dania After Dark, these unique programs. And we want to invite you all to make sure that the second Saturday of each month, you put us in your calendar, because we have another great, great event coming up in March. So that concludes my report, and every day, we're trying to move the city forward, and we we're grateful for your support and your trust in this administration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, City Manager. And now we will have our city attorney. Commissioner Romoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. City Manager, I just have one question, because I had a couple of calls on the parking for FAU in relationship to the Lucky Fish Grill. Do we know when that's going to happen, when we'll be able to have those spaces?
So about a year and a half ago, two years ago, Candido and I, we looked at the parking lot at FAU, and it was pretty much eighty percent empty. Long story short, Eve, myself, Candido, we went over there, we worked out a deal. We have one hundred parking spaces there already. What we are working on now, with the support of our city attorney, is being able to now use some of those parking spaces to be able to have valet parking. So we are at the last step, last step to be able to get those valet parking in that agreement. But we have also, Candido and I have been able to identify another forty parking spaces within our existing, just by moving some things, you know, and just thinking outside the box. So addition to those one hundred, and being able to get that next step of that valet, we've identified forty that we feel within the next couple of months that we'll be able to to strike. Go ahead, Eve.
On the valet parking within the hundred at FAU, they're making the determination this week. I asked to attend their meeting of the Board of Directors of the col- of the university. They said they're not set up for that, but they understand the priority and the need, and hopefully, we should have an answer this week.
Okay, so, all right, perfect. If you just let us know, because I'm getting lots of calls. Everyone's really excited, but they're worried about the parking, and I assured them we're working on a solution.
So is Lucky Fish, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, City Attorney, and we will move on to item five point two, City Attorney Report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just make it real quick. We have an addendum on the agenda, item eight point six, which is part of consent. It's a minor change to the logo policy. As you know, if we put the discretionary, if we put the funds in the budget for a program that we are sponsoring, the logo can automatically be used. We added one more sentence, that should the administration authorize media-related articles to be published, the article can use the logo as well. We didn't think it was a huge change, but it would allow for the speed with which we worked to make sure that the articles can be timely published. One last thing I just wanted to bring to your attention. I have gone through, as you know, the manager always talks about deep benches. So I have published for a, an Assistant City Attorney. I have made the offer, which was accepted. Luis Figueroa will be joining us at the end of the month. He is a Harvard graduate, and Anna and I have known him forever, and ironically, he was the, the attorney who brought me into municipal law way back when. He was my former partner.
Oh, very nice. Well, welcome. We look forward to welcoming him. Thank you, City Attorney. We look forward to our new, our newest person coming on board, Assistant City Attorney. All right. Next, we have item five point three, City Clerk Reminders.
Thank you, Mayor. Your next meeting is scheduled for February twenty-fifth at seven P.M. And then following that, you have your March meetings, beginning on the eleventh for CRA at five thirty, and then seven P.M. for your regular city commission meeting. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, we have item six, Public Safety Reports, and we will start with our very own BSO Captain Jason Tarala.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Attorney, City Manager. So this weekend, during our operational plan over in Dania Point, we we were alerted that there was numerous burglaries that had just occurred in the parking garage. Our deputies immediately responded. They set up a perimeter. While they were at the perimeter in the garage, one of our brand-new LPRs over on Bryan Road hit for a stolen vehicle that was leaving Dania Point. One of our deputies was able to locate that vehicle. We followed it. It ended up circling off of ninety-five, and the driver ended up bailing out by the La Meridian Hotel. The driver ended up fleeing into the La Meridian Hotel, where our deputies gave pursuit, and we were able to arrest that individual on the third floor of the La Meridian Hotel. He was a fourteen-year-old juvenile. He was placed in custody for possession of the stolen vehicle, which he had when he bailed out, and he was also responsible for at least ten burglaries that occurred inside the Avery parking garage. So another fantastic arrest. And I know another question I get all the time, where they're coming from? That juvenile was not a Dania resident. He was from Plantation, so he was not one of ours.
Thank you.
Yesterday, Deputy Rico, when he was on patrol, he observed a gray Buick driving around one of our school zones. Throughout the day, he ended up conducting a traffic stop on the vehicle, and upon making contact with the driver of the vehicle, he smelled marijuana coming from the car. He got the driver out of the vehicle, and inside the vehicle, he found twenty-three point four grams of crack cocaine packaged consistent with street-level narcotics sales in the glovebox. The driver was placed in custody, and he was charged with possession of cocaine with intent to distribute within a school, and also the tag not being assigned to the vehicle. And also, this weekend, when we were on our operational plan over in Dania Point, one of our detectives from our burglary apprehension team, who was working the operational plan, observed the vehicle acting suspiciously by the Nike outlet store. So he made contact with the vehicle, and through his investigation, he discovered that there was another individual inside the Nike store that was related to this vehicle. They went inside, and they made contact with that individual. That individual had had a anti-shoplifting device in his pocket. That individual happened to be wanted for numerous thefts out of Bass Pro Shops. He had multiple warrants for possession of cocaine, possession of drug paraphernalia, as well as the petty thefts. Due to our deputies being attentive, being on the operational plan, we were able to get that individual in custody, charge him for our Bass Pro Shop thefts, and also for his warrants, and stop him from doing the thefts at the Nike outlet store. To answer the mayor's question from last week, I got a new sergeant cellphone coming. It should be here tomorrow. So I just gotta wait for it to come tomorrow. We can activate it. That will be only for the commission. For, I've got questions if we can give that number to our community. We can't. The reason why is that our BSO policies state that individuals need to call the police, they need to call the non-emergency number, or nine-one-one if it's an emergency, because we need to track the calls coming in. We need to have a dialogue of the calls coming in to our dispatcher, so they can dispatch our units for officer safety, and also so we can track the calls. So that number, though, is for you as the commission. You could have a number to call if you have questions.
After hours.
After hours, absolutely. So I will get that for you guys. But that is not for the public. That is only for the commission. The public still needs to call the police. That is the proper procedure for the Broward Sheriff's Office. In reference to many complaints I had, I was dealing with the city manager on an email off of Southwest Twelve Street, referenced the construction. Deputy Boris went out there with our entire traffic enforcement team. We're getting, we're working with Fernando and the city. We're getting no through truck signs posted, which weren't posted before. So those trucks that were passing through with construction wasn't illegal. So Deputy Boris is working with the city to get no through truck signs posted on those residential areas. We also made contact with the site manager, and we told them, Fernando, help me with this, told them to stay on Second Avenue to Sheridan Street and stop cutting through the neighborhood streets. So hopefully, that'll alleviate it. If it's not, we'll still be out there conducting traffic. And once we get those signs posted, if those trucks cut through, we can write tickets for that. So we dealt with that. We also have our spring break operational plan that will be in place at Dania Point starting March first. I met with Dania Point again last week on Friday. I met with their entire management team. We have a really strong, very heavy law enforcement presence to keep that safe. Obviously, myself and the mayor were involved with meetings with the state attorney. That is a priority for us in the city. So we have an operational plan that'll begin going through all of spring break through Easter Sunday, to to make sure we keep that a very safe location for everyone. And last but not least, I want to introduce, we have our very new patrol lieutenant to the district. Obviously, you know, with Shalonda Cooper, who got promoted, Nick Romano took the new deputy chief's position, that opened up our new patrol lieutenant spot on Alpha Shift. So I was actually able to request Lieutenant Parrish, who was just promoted. I worked with Tajee twenty-two years ago in Oakland Park, and we were deputies together. And one thing the city manager always tells me, she says, she likes it when I pick my people coming. So we pick people that are coming that I know of, and I let her know, and it's people that I that I can, that I pick myself. So I know that we're gonna get the best people coming in our city, and that's really important to us. So I was able to talk to the colonel and my major, and we were able to get Lieutenant Parrish off the list, who I wanted. And I'll let him introduce yourself, himself to you. But he's been with us for twenty-two years. He's a fantastic, fantastic person. I've worked with him on the road. We were zone partners for many years in Oakland Park together, and I'll let him do a quick introduction of himself.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it, and I want to say I'm very excited for this opportunity to come here and work in the great city of Dania Beach. I'm from Broward County, so I know the history, well, some of the history of Dania Beach, and I see some of the great stuff that you guys are doing and currently working on, and I'm glad to be a part of that team and thankful for this opportunity. Thanks.
And Tajee, you know, he has a wealth of knowledge. He's been in a lot of units, a lot of different specialty units, where he brings a wealth of knowledge to the city. So, and that concludes my report.
Just a minute.
If I may, through the mayor, I want you to give him an update of of your new proactive initiative that you put in place for Dania After Dark to ensure the safety.
Yes, yes.
That's very important, especially in light of what happened, unfortunately, in in New Orleans.
Yes, I don't know if you guys were able to see it this time, but this was the first time. So we are limited on what we have, because we have to go through our QRF to get these. But for the first time, I was able to show the city manager, we had the special metal barricades put up. I don't know if you saw them. They were on the other side, on the east side of where everybody was eating. Those barricades are specifically in place to stop what happened in New Orleans, to stop a vehicle that has chosen to cause death and carnage. Those are placed to stop that from happening. So if a vehicle was trying to come down that road at a high rate of speed to to do damage to humans, those are placed strategically that nothing can get by them, they can't run them over, they can't move them. So we had them out for the first time, and we are in the process of requesting them again for all of our events. And that's something that we can also look at the future, maybe the city purchasing. They're obviously, especially for an area like Dania After Dark, where we can control it with the three streets, if we put those out, there's absolutely no way a vehicle can get down there. And that's And that's just another level of protection to protect all of our residents. So the manager saw them for the first time, and they were, they're fantastic looking. They look nice, and they obviously are a life-saving tool for us.
Excellent work, Chief. Hold on just a second, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Chief, you know, when you do your reports, you're always commenting on the Dania Point and the few things that go on over there. When you get to a point where there's 10 break-ins in a car theft of a 14-year-old, how do you treat the 14-year-old?
Well, we have our, we have our policies dealing with juveniles, that's a felony. So any felony a juvenile goes to jail. If it's misdemeanors dealing with juveniles, if they are allowed to get the juvenile civil citation, they will be offered that. But that depends. If the juvenile has previous, there's many different criteria for them to get that. But that's a felony. So regardless of whether you're a juvenile or adult, if it's a felony, you take the ride, whether it's going to juvenile detention or the main jail.
So in other words, he's not gonna be out because he's juvenile. He would spend three, four years into juvenile detention.
No, no, no. They, in the county, I believe it's up to 21 days here at a judge's discretion. The judge will make the determination what they, what they want to do at that level. Obviously, that's a judge's decision. It's not ours. But they still go to jail that night. They're not roaming the streets. They do go to jail, and that's up to a judge.
It just seems funny that at 14-years-old, they can steal 10 cars and get, do a felony, and they go to jail for 21 days. I know it's not, it's not just, I'm just curious, that's all.
It's the juvenile system.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they do go to jail. If it's a felony, they still go to jail. And that's a, no, that's a major issue, you know, we face at Dania Point, juvenile crime. Me and me and the mayor just had a meeting on it, me and the City Manager. You know, we know that majority of our crime occurring there is unfortunately juveniles.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
And you should know that Dania Point does have that youth policy in place. So if they're, they're in groups, then they can be trespassed, right, Chief?
On Friday nights, Saturday nights, after 5:00 PM, juveniles are not allowed on the property without a, without their designated adult. They have to be 21 and older. So that policy has allowed us, when we see the juveniles on the property, we can now go up to them right away, verify if they're with an adult or not, and if not, they are trespassed, told to leave right away. So we don't let the groups show up and just congregate. We get them off the property right away, and that has significantly lowered the violent crime and any crime that's been occurring. It's been a really good resource for us in place.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, you've been very good, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. And we, next up, we have our very own Chief of BSO Fire, Chief Sergio Pelissero.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and great citizens of Dania Beach. So we always are continuing to work on our CAS accreditation. I want to thank the IT Department for going across the street and helping me out and set up for that. And now I want to talk to you about life safety education, a little update on our program with life safety. We have a life safety educator, and he's working on some good school initiatives with youth, with the youth. One of them is the bike rodeo reintroduction. So in partnership with our neighborhood support team at BSO, Dania Beach Elementary, Collins Elementary, we're working to reintroduce a, what's called a bike rodeo. This is for fourth and fifth graders. This event will teach kids critical bicycle safety skills, including the use of a helmet, bike inspections, and road safety awareness. We have conducted hundreds of, we've conducted school presentation drills for hundreds of students, and they have participated in safety presentations and evacuation drills, reinforcing our youth, the importance of being ready just in case of any emergency. We're working with our private schools and daycares. We started age-appropriate fire safety training, teaching the young children, making sure that they receive tailored fire prevention lessons to build early awareness. Also, we've enhanced emergency response training for daycare staff. And now they participate in specialized training on evacuation procedures and emergency response protocols, creating a safer environment at those schools. And as far as business education, we've worked with Nautical Ventures and other local businesses, and they have received hands-on training on fire extinguisher use and evacuation procedures and emergency preparedness. We've also had multiple Dania residents come by our fire station and have their car seats installed professionally, and learn how to install them themselves in case they need to take them out and put them back in. And most importantly, I want to thank you, tell you about, I had a great meeting this afternoon with our City Manager, and we met about reinforcing and staffing our team. So we're working together on this, and I would just want to tell you that I'm very happy about that, and thank you very much, Manager, for, for your support. And thank you, Commission, for always having my back and supporting fire rescue.
That concludes your report?
That's it.
All right. Thank you so much, Chief. We do appreciate you and all the great work that you do. Yes, give him another round of applause. All right, next, we have our citizens' comments, and we do have a citizen's comment by Ms. Deborah McDonough. If you would please come to the forefront and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Deborah McDonough, and I reside at 42 Southeast 6th Street, and I've been a longtime resident and business owner in the city. Recently, we got a notice of violation at our medical complex because we closed the shutters at night. The neighborhood at night, because we're close to Sharkies, there's a lot of transits. It's a weekly short rental, and we've had cars broken into. And during the holiday, they were so brazen, right on US 1, to take the streetlight pole and steal the wiring under it, so the Christmas lights, and the streetlight pole went out. So although we have an alarm system, cameras, and signs up for BSO, if you're on the premises, to please leave. In the mornings, sometimes I come early, and there's people sleeping under the overhang. So we don't feel safe leaving the shutters open at night, which we were told it's aesthetic. So my suggestion, if possible, maybe the Arts Council can come up with a design of our shutters, that maybe they could be painted. Maybe they could put some type of wrap on them to make it, if it's aesthetic. We're concerned, we have a pharmacy in there, there's eye care, there's expensive medical equipment, and I know the police is doing the best they can to patrol, but every department has a shortage. And sometimes I even drive by there in the evening, because I live close, just to make sure it's okay. But I'm nervous now, all of us in the building, with having windows not secure, the doors primarily. So if you can consider maybe.
Thank, thank you, Ms. McDonough. I'm gonna have the City Manager address that for us, but.
We didn't know what the code was, or if we could get a copy of it. You know, I'm speaking on behalf of Gary Jacobs, who manages the place for us, so we'd appreciate any help we could get.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity. Ma'am, I just want to let you know, you, you must have been a fly on the wall today, because our Deputy City Manager, myself, and Vice Mayor Salvino sat for about 45 minutes this afternoon, and we were coming up with really cool initiatives. And one of the things that we discussed, hey, I want to talk to our mayor and see if, if our Arts Board can come up with a really cool initiative, because my shed at home, I had my hairdresser paint my shed, because he's an artist, and my shed looks beautiful. So we want, we want you to be protected, but it's also the law on the shutters, so the look of the shuttering at night looks like the business may be closed or going out of business. So we're gonna take that to make sure that you're safe, but we want to make your shutters look as great as it can be, and we can come up with a really cool program.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it, ma'am.
Yes. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, you know, thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Mayor. You know, that, I can't believe that that came out. I mean, seriously, because we were, you know, we had calls on that, and, you know, we understand to protect the, the community, you know, and what's going on. Understand that that ordinance has been in place for a long time, and it's being reinforced now because of the, you know, the aesthetics of our city. We're coming along. We're establishing, and we're looking good. So the City, actually, the City Manager's idea, but I said, we gotta do this. We just can't just tell people no. And she goes, I think art's the answer. And she said, because, you know, you put things on, but just keep in mind, it's not gonna be arts in public places. It's gonna be arts by the owners. But I think it's a great idea that, you know, to dress up our city, maybe put something that's city-oriented, or like we have on the bridges, if turtles or something, or, you know, something like that. Can't turn into signage, I don't think. I think she's gonna work with the community director, but, I mean, it's exciting. So you can tell people out there that, you know, we're working on it, and, and I think that Gary will be happy with the result when it's over. He's gonna, he's gonna be contacted, so.
You know, based on our discussion, can, can we allow them, because of their location and, and how delicate some of the, the medical equipment, that they can continue to shutter, and we won't issue a violation?
What I can recommend, just from, I mean, she hasn't gone to a hearing yet, so why don't you keep them closed until you go to the hearing, get a certain amount of time for compliance, and, and we can probably give you more time, maybe 30 or 60 days or 90 days, and we can come up with a program.
Yeah. My, my recommendation will be that we issue a 90-day, so we can work on, on a game plan. So please tell the owner of the business that.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Debbie, for coming up and sharing those concerns with us. We really do appreciate that, and that's what we do is work as a team to get it fixed. So thank you so much. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Does the Commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
What? Oh, did I make a motion to pass a consent agenda?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor to pass the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously. And what does that mean? It means that the Rita Crockett Beach Sports Academy, the pit, has now been officially approved by this Commission once and for all. So please stand up, come on up. Let's have a few words. This was a long time coming, and we, we are very excited about this progress. Come on up. Well, I'm too old now to do it, but, just kidding, just kidding. My team, these guys, come on up, Jeff. I have some champagne in my bag. I, I just want to thank you guys. I mean, we're so, so, so excited. We've all been just working, little worker bees, and I know you guys have been working hard, and I appreciate you, City Attorney. I know we've gone back and forth a lot. You're my best friend now. Not really, but okay. And, you know, we can't wait to, to get things going and see all of you guys out there in that sand. It's gonna be fun, because we got the pit. Oh, I love it, yes. So we'll make sure we'll get you shirts. We got you. But thank you. I don't know, is there something? We need to do?
Not tonight.
Okay, I have something I can give you, you know, but, but otherwise, thank you, and, you know. Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you. Very well deserved. Top the bottle later, I guess. I do have, shall I set up some cups over here? Thank you and congratulations once again. We are very excited to bring this program and this sports academy, the pit, to the city of Dania Beach. Next up, we have item 9, bids and requests for proposals.
Would you like me to read item 9.1?
Eve, if you would please read item 9.1.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the award of ITB 24-20, Dania Beach City Hall window and door replacement to VPR Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $378,995.09, plus a 10% contingency for unseen circumstances provided for conflicts in effective date. This is public services.
This is part of our hardening grant, where we've already completed the roof. Now we're gonna hit the windows and the doors. So we just want your support to ensure that all of City Hall is totally secure via this grant.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
My, well, I'm gonna make a motion, but I, next time, put down windows indoors, because I thought you were buying one window and one door for $378,000, and I was not gonna agree to that. Either that, or I'm in the wrong business.
Lots of windows and lots of doors.
Okay.
Gotta have the S.
I make a motion then to pass the resolution, 9.1.
I have a, a motion by Vice Mayor Salvino for 9.1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 9.1 passes unanimously. We move on to item 10. We have no quasi-judicial or public hearing items on this agenda, so then we will move on to first reading ordinances for item 11. Eve, if you could please read item 11.1.
An ordinance of the City Commission to amend Chapter 16, entitled Vacation Rentals, by amending 16-2 to clarify advertising prohibitions for vacation rentals, defining vacation rental occupancy, and specifically referencing the city's noise ordinance, providing for conflicts cut of vacation effective date. You do have an addenda on the dais on this, and very briefly, I'll just take it over if you have any questions. Our code is grandfathered in by the state, and we require five nights, five-day stays. But unfortunately, there are some people who have vacation rentals that advertise for one day, two days, three days, four days, less than the five-day minimum. So we're, we're requiring that if the advertisement has to reflect what we actually require, because we don't want people to think that they have the right to come in and rent for less, and then it's a, a constant battle of chasing all of these vendors. The second portion is that, as you know, it's up to 10-people occupancy, as it's defined in our code, and we're just making clear that third persons may visit, but they can't stay overnight. And finally, the last issue is that we're, since we want everything in one location, we took the noise ordinance and the hours of operation in the quiet zone time period and put into the, this ordinance as well, so that everybody can find everything relating to vacation rentals in one document. And those are the changes.
Thank you. Eve, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'm starting to lose my voice. I probably should have asked you this earlier when we were meeting, but I didn't get it, even think about it at the time, quite frankly. How are we gonna enforce this? Because we get, we have a lot of vacation rentals in town, and there are people that like to call about them, a lot.
Well, this is, the one issue with the advertising is because it came up by a resident who had a vacation rental, and so we're clarifying that. And that's easier, that's very easy for us to follow up. Obviously, the noise is very easy for us to follow up, because we have a process for that. So as to the occupancy, we're just making, this is raised periodically by certain residents. We wanted to just put it out there and just make it clear, because he keeps arguing the interpretation. We don't want code in the middle of this argument. So this is doing that clarification, so that code doesn't have to justify anymore. This is the answer. And really, it comes down to if there is a noise ordinance violation, and the police go out, and if they see people, more than 10 people sleeping at night, that would be the, or any admissions that they make. But otherwise, we're not going in and inspecting.
Okay.
All right. Okay, hold on. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I have a question as well. I know Airbnb is trying to work with municipalities as much as they can, especially in the last, like, two years. They've made a really big effort towards it. For us to have the requirement of five-day minimum, you know, maybe one of you guys who knows uses Airbnb more than me, if there's a certain zip code, wouldn't you not be able to enter, you know, less than a five-night stay in that area? Is there any way we can work with Airbnb? Has anybody reached out to them? You know what I mean? You know what I mean?
It, it's not an Airbnb problem. They can do it. It's just that the person who's doing the rentals is not complying with our code.
Yeah, because they're advertising it for...
And so what we're, we're saying is, if they choose to not listen, they, the renter, I'm sorry, the landlord, I guess, chooses not to follow our code, they're going to get hit with a ticket.
Yeah.
And so that would be the incentive for them to make it, change the Airbnb posting to the five days.
So that, that's what I'm asking, if there's maybe some way we could reach out to Airbnb and see if they have that sort of program.
I have no problem trying to reach out to them.
I think it would be very useful for everybody if, if they use this.
Sure, I can ask them.
You know what I mean? If you can't end the listing at all in three three zero zero four, three 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 one two, unless you have five days or more.
Yeah, I don't have a problem asking them for that. I'll, I'll contact them. There is more than one organization, but we can try and reach them all.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And Vice Mayor Salvino?
I just have a question on, on the five day rental, six day rental, whatever it is. I know that the minimum is five days. When, these people that have the Airbnb, I'm just going to clarify this for myself and maybe anybody else that doesn't understand it. They're supposed to, they're, they're supposed to have a license to, to do the Airbnb with the city in...
Correct.
Okay. So once, um, so if we, I, I guarantee you that not every Airbnb in this city does not have a license. And I feel that maybe using that, like what, uh, Commissioner Ryan was talking about, by talking that, you see people register it. I think we should have a follow up of that address and that thing. I think we should have enough employees to monitor that.
Code does do those monitoring. And Eleanor can perhaps speak to it in more detail.
I will, I'll follow, I'm still finishing the question. You can answer it one time. No, you can, come on. But anyhow, all right, so if we're following up with that and then we get into the situation of the rules and each one of those people know the rules that are there, whether, uh, the cars are parked, the, the maximum amount, the days that are there, and so on. You know, so let's say that they break the rule, okay? You're not going to go in there and arrest them. You're not going to go there and find them. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, we do have a, um, vacation rental, um, tracking service that we use. It goes on multiple sites, not just Airbnb. There's VRB, there's a few other boutique sites as well. And they monitor them. And they look for advertising less than the five days currently. And if we see that advertising, we reach out and we do cite the property owner. They get a notice of violation. They attend the special magistrate and the magistrate...
Finds them.
Finds them. But she's, I think, clarifying is that conversation that happens at the magistrate. They're saying, it wasn't clear. I didn't know I couldn't advertise. It just says they can't stay more than five days. So she's trying to clarify, so there's not that back and forth during the magistrate hearing.
So, all right, so anyhow, it feels like you got a handle on, on what's going on there. And then on the, on the, I think one of the cure, help to cure it a little bit more would be that we, I don't know whether we've established in, in an ordinance or not, the amount of fines that, uh, for repeat offenders. Because if somebody's getting the first fine for two hundred and fifty dollars and they're getting three thousand dollars, they're not going to mind paying the two hundred and fifty dollar fine. So I think...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so I think that maybe if we haven't established a, uh, criteria and follow that criteria and not give breaks to the people that are out there, I think you're going to find that they'll start following the rules a little bit better.
So we do have a, a fee schedule and it, overall, it is followed occasionally. I know of only one instance where the special magistrate actually gave a concession, but it was like one out of all of the vacation rental cases that occurred.
We're pretty aggressive with vacation rental and noise violations.
And we actually do them as, um, emergency type situations. And, and so they're a higher amount. It's not two fifteen, it was five hundred.
Two quick questions. So the two questions were, how many times have we had a repeat offender? That's multiple, multiple times.
Yeah, I have to...
And, um, the, uh, what was the second question? Uh, huh? Stop everyone. Are the repeat offenders in, in the...
And the, the fine gets increasingly higher as they repeat. So the first offense starts at five hundred, the second is a thousand, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we are following up with it.
Yes.
And if they don't pay the fine, then we, we start processing liens and stuff. Is that correct? Okay, all right. I just think that, you know, because we're controlled by the state of the five days, I think that, you know, that, um, and also code enforcement as far as the parking and the, like, I, I see a lot of, I have particular ones in my neighborhood. I've just noticed recently that they're parking up and down the, um, you know, the sidewalk. There's like four or five cars around the corner. It's a corner house, but, you know, it doesn't affect the street or anything, but there's a lot of cars there. And every now and then you'll go by there and there'll be a lot of people. But there, it seems like it's only a one night rental and they're gone again.
We can look into it if we want to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, uh, just if you, I guess if we have a, a list of people like that and maybe code sees a lot of cars in one spot, maybe they can look and see if that's a...
Yeah, we also share the license list with the code enforcement, so they can monitor.
It's a tough job out there, but I know if we just, go ahead, that's all, thank you.
Hold on just a second, Eleanor. Commissioner Ramoni?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up to what Vice Mayor Salvino was asking. Progression of fines. So whatever the fine starts at, it starts progressing. Is there a point in time when we just say, no more fines? You're losing your license? Is that an option?
There is a process for revocation and suspension in the code. So if we do have a multiple offender, which we monitor through BSO complaints and code enforcement, and we send that list to the City Manager and we have to revoke if it's three, I think three or more is what we've decided, three or more.
Three or more, and I think we've done it once already.
Okay, so there was three or...
It, we, 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 yes, we decided had, it should be three or more offenses. And, um, it's a revocation for, I'm sorry, suspension for six months, revocation for a year.
So what about Eve, if they don't pay their fine?
Well, like any, anyone, we can't force them to pay the fines, but we can, um, place a lien against the property. And if it, if it's a vacation rental, it's not homesteads ordinarily. So then eventually, we can foreclose.
So if they don't pay their fine, wouldn't that also register with us to say, okay, you're not paying your fines, so you don't get your license?
We haven't done that, because we don't do that for anyone.
We haven't had that situation occur at this point.
Okay, it hasn't happened yet, okay, okay.
We'd bring it to the City Manager at that point, if that was one of the properties on the list.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni. Commissioner Ryan?
I, I don't see any further discussions. I'd like to move to approve item eleven point one.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ryan to approve item eleven point one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And commis, and item eleven point one passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. And now we are on to item eleven point two. Eve, if you could please read item eleven point two.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the City Commission to amend chapter twenty-seven Water and Sewer of the city's code by amending article two Water Use and Water Shortage Regulations to amend the title to Water Use Landscape Irrigation and Water Shortage Regulations, creating subpart A for water shortage, subpart B for water use and landscape irrigation regulations, amending section twenty-seven dash forty-three entitled Permanent Restrictions for Lawn and Landscaping Irrigation to modify the hours of use of sprinklers and irrigation from twelve AM to six AM, six A, six PM to twelve, eleven fifty-nine PM, twice a week, providing for conflicts, codification, and effective date. This is Commissioner Ramoni's item. I have prepared the draft. In short, currently, you can water from nine PM to nine AM. We're changing it from to six PM to six AM. And the biggest reason is so that kids, when they're walking to school with their parents or walking by themselves, middle school kids or whatever, walking to school, they don't get showered by sprinklers and have to go into the street. That's the main purpose. The second purpose, always with either, either the, the original hours or the new hours, is for conservation purposes, so that there's no watering during the major daylight hours. Commissioner Ramoni?
Commissioner Ramoni?
Yeah, and I just wanted to actually, um, put a sound out there for, um, a college student who actually brought it to my attention. He lives in Tamarack and he has advocated for this in other cities within Broward County. Really cool kid. He couldn't be here, because he's in school right now in, in University of Florida. But he has instances where students were injured, having to walk into a street, because water was affecting their ability to walk on the sidewalk. So, um, I just want to thank Parnav Gupta for bringing that to our attention. And, um, I'd like to make a motion to pass it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ramoni to pass item eleven point two. Do I have a second?
Apparently, I'm the second queen tonight, so second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, item eleven point two passes.
Oh, nay?
Yeah. Let's just, yeah. I don't like it either. It's okay. Do you want to speak on it? Okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
You know, I, I think that continuing to change these things around, unless we're having a water shortage and we're on, on shortage restrictions by the state or the county, you know, we keep cutting back on certain things. I mean, you know, don't, don't use the crosswalk, don't, you know, use the sidewalk. You know, everybody's entitled to watch for themselves. I think by continuing to pass these little things like this here, you're regulating our rights. And I don't, I'm not very happy about the item. I understand if it's, the sprinklers are on, you know, I mean, what happens if they're walking and it's raining? You know, I mean, I just, things like this, I'm not going to, I will not support probably ninety percent of the things that come up like this. I think it's a waste of our time. I think it's something that we should not be putting out there and changing for public freedom. And that's my comment, thank you.
I will add to that, Vice Mayor, because I did bring this up during my agenda meeting. And, you know, when you start regulating the hours of water and this and that, it, it, it does turn to be, um, government overreach with certain items and we're starting to act like an HOA. Uh, I, I get it. I'm glad I can bring a smile at this time of the evening. But, uh, I, I, it, it starts to be, it does start to feel a little too, uh, overreaching for the government. And so I did have those, those same feelings. And, um, I, I do believe at, at the end of the day that I am going to go with that, with that, with that feeling, that I don't want us to be policing people's water and start giving tickets when they, when, and if somebody's policing how many hours they've been on and you had your... Because we have those residents who start watching people's water, watching people's music, watching people's every move. And I, I do believe we want to have some sort of freedom, um, you know, to, to do that. And I think most people are responsible. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to agree with you on that one, Vice Mayor. So let's just go ahead and call a vote, Elora, because that, that did bring it back to my, uh, mind.
Just, just to be clear, we already regulate. It's just changing the hours we're regulating. So we regulate nine to nine, this would be six to six. And I think that's why I didn't...
Yeah, okay. Either way, we're regulated. What, can I ask a question on, on this? Why are we regulating hours when we're not under a shortage?
Um, because there's, well, technically, I think we are going to be in a shortage soon, but...
This is an ordinance, it's not, it's not something...
Yeah, but the, the city has always regulated not to do it during the day, because it is for conservation purposes.
All right, that's just another issue then, because here we go again, that we're not, we're not enforcing that, that ordinance. I can guarantee you that. So, you know, this is something that, um, we keep having ordinances. We don't, we don't, we, we have selective enforcement and, um, this doesn't work for me. All right, well, at this point, it doesn't really matter. It's still, I, I thought it was just, we were changing the ordinance besides the hours that you were adding, that the days of, um, that there. But, um, all right, well, I'm, I'm going to do whatever you want to do, but I'm also going to go back and ask for an ordinance change on this, on the next meeting or two.
Commissioner Ryan?
It's not, it's not about the time, it's more about the water conservation part of it. So if you, if you're, if you're on city municipal water, then you're not allowed to, to water when the city's on a shortage, correct? Yeah.
Thank you. If there's a state or a county recognized shortage, then the emergency rules apply, which is a sub, this subpart A. And whatever they dictate, we have to listen to.
But that just applies to city water, correct?
No.
So if you have a well on your property, it applies to you as well?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Hold on, Commissioner Ramoni?
All right, I just want to make a point of clarification. When I brought this item before the attorney, it wasn't my intention to regulate the amount of water you could use at your property. My intention was to make it safer for kids to walk to school in the event that they're watering the sidewalks. So you can water as much as you want, just don't do it when they're walking to school and coming home from school. That's it. We don't want to regulate, trust me. I don't want to do that either. But I just want our kids to be safer, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni. Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, and you know what? It doesn't really matter, like you said, Commissioner Ramoni, whether it's nine to nine or six to six, it's immaterial at this point. Uh, I, and you're right. The thing is, is that, um, I don't think we should be under regulation unless we're, uh, unless we're ordered to be under regulation. So, uh, I'll, I'll go with whatever you want to go with at this time. But, you know, we, maybe at a different meeting, we can address the ordinance. Is that fair enough?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So then what is the final motion? Do I have a motion? Make a mo...
I'll, I'll go with his motion at this point.
Let's, let's finalize it. I, I think, uh, we have a motion.
Motion's still pending, you just didn't vote. We have a motion in a second. We just wanted to know, is it roll call or unanimous?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor, you opposed?
We're one.
Okay, let's, let's get, uh, two, let's go to item twelve point one, is that what we are?
Yes, we are.
Twelve point one. Eve, if you could please read item twelve point one.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the City Commission amending chapter twenty-two Streets and Sidewalks to provide language cleanup to allow for the code designation of all streets, providing for codification, conflicts, irreibility, and effective date. This is community development. This is the second reading. I think you already know, you do have a public hearing on this item and it basically cleans up some language, so that we can have code designation.
Good evening again, Eleanor Narina, Community Development Director. I'm here if you have any questions. Eve summarized it pretty well and it is second reading.
All right, do we have any discussion on that? A public hearing? This is a public hearing? Does, do I have anyone to speak for against this item? Seeing none?
Make a motion, pass item, uh, twelve point one, Mayor.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Salvino. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item twelve point one passes. And now we're on to discussion and possible action. Item thirteen, we have none. So next, we have appointments on item fourteen point one. Advisory Board appointments, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're, we're almost there, just three more. For the Green Advisory Board, I have one appointment needed for Mayor Davis.
Yes. I have Renee Buck, who is going to be my Green Advisory appointee. And I am very excited, because he has a great background in, uh, the environment. So I, I will send you his contact information as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. And then we have one appointment for the Vice Mayor, for the Green Advisory Board.
I'd like to nominate Joyce Davis. I don't have anybody. I, I'm, I'm struggling with that one appointment.
Commissioner Ramoni?
Hold on just a second, Commissioner Ramoni.
I would like to ask Commissioner Ramoni if he has anybody that he might have to offer.
You have her information, correct?
Is it the...
It's Brandy Oliver. I'm just going to call her and explain what happened.
Okay.
Just for everybody to note, there was a little mix-up in my appointment for the Education Committee, and somehow or another, our wires got crossed, and I thought I had two, but I originally had one, so I appointed two, so she hasn't where to go now.
She can go there.
She can go there, okay, perfect.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Wonderful, perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner Remoli. I think we are almost on our way.
Yes, almost, and then, because Joanna has moved into a board member seat for P&amp;Z, now that opens up the alternate seat, so I don't know, that's a commission as a whole appointment, so I don't know if anybody has anybody in mind for the Planning and Zoning Board as an alternate?
Anybody? Commissioner Remoli?
I would also like to appoint Brandy, if it's possible, because I think she's really good and very engaged, and I think she would make an excellent backup in the event that we need that.
And she's not on a board now?
No, she's not anything right now, so, if everyone's okay with that.
I'm okay. Let's get it checked off the list.
Beautiful. Okay, so we have consensus for all appointments?
Yes.
We're all set, thank you.
Okay, yay.
All right, we are rocking and rolling, team, let's go. All right, Commission comments, up first. We will start with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one thing that I really feel like I need to talk about tonight. We all got the invitation to an installation in Hollywood of some public art that was donated. And maybe some of you saw the same thing I did, in that the piece is, is exactly the same as the piece in front of City Hall, being the, the weather vane with the heart, by the same artist. To say that I was disappointed when I saw this is putting it mildly. It's not even so much that it's in Hollywood, it's literally like five miles from here. And it's bigger, and it's on a platform. And it was free to them, it was free to the city, whereas we paid quite a bit of money for it. And, and ours was used, they had to refurbish it and whatnot. But my concern is that it devalues what we have, and it makes ours less unique. And, you know, that, that's not usually something that you have to worry about in a contract. I would think dealing with artists is making sure that it's original and unique and that they're, like a non-compete, saying that it's not going to go anywhere else. But apparently that is something that we need to do now. I did speak to our city attorney about this, and asked her what our recourse is, if any. And correct me if I'm wrong, Eve, we don't really have much recourse with what's happened already. However, going forward, we can amend our contracts, and can we potentially do them retroactively for those who have not offended so far?
I, I will talk to the other artists, they have to agree on the, on the existing contracts. But going forward, we certainly can put in a distance requirement. There is some issue with the ownership. In other words, for art, they own the copyright for the artwork, and so we may have some difficulties in requiring complete originality for our piece versus some other location, if they don't agree, and most artists don't. But we could do a distance requirement.
Well, but I do also think that most artists want to be original, and they don't want to continually do the same thing over and over again and become a manufacturer as opposed to an artist. I mean, I, I know that, that's a whole nother issue, but when, especially when you're serving on our board and you are supposed to be looking out for us. So it's very disappointing, like I said. But I do want to see, we need to consider this going forward and make sure it doesn't happen. I don't, I suspect that most artists would never consider doing this. A lot of the other projects that we have coming up, like the Love Wall, for example, that I know the mayor has talked about and that we all approved, like that one, it's, it's, it says love on all these different cities, and they're all next to each other, but they're all different, and they look different. This is literally identical, and that's the problem. It, and it, given the amount of money that we spend for it, it's, it's very disappointing. And I'll leave it at that. And that's all I have to say tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. We are on to Commissioner Remoli.
Sorry, did I, okay, here we go. Thank you so much, Mayor. And I echo Commissioner Llewellyn's comments on that, I don't need to go any further with that. I just wanted a shout-out to Parks and Rec for a wonderful event, Dania After Dark. And what was really very cool about that event is I walked around and said hello to a lot of the people. And we had people from Davie, Plantation, Wilton Manor, Hollywood. It was truly people from all over Broward, which is really nice because obviously they've learned about our events and the quality events that we put on here in our city, and that says a lot about everybody involved in our city and how we do our events here. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that, and that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Remoli, Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see everybody out and about in the community, especially the commission, all the events going on, we're, we're really moving along, it's great to see. And let's just keep moving forward, keep working together, keep getting things done. I appreciate you guys, and everybody enjoy a nice President's Day for the long weekend coming up. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Vice Mayor Salvino.
I have one thing to say. I, you know, tonight just was really good. And the reason why it was really good was because we had some controversy on a couple of items tonight, and it was four to one, I think, maybe twice or whatever. And, you know, we're all smiling, and I'll tell you, that's important to me, that, to know that our commission is that good, that we are working together. I really feel good of being up here with all of you, so I just wanted to thank you for that. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, Vice Mayor. I am so proud that you're our Vice Mayor. And it is, and I'm being a little tongue-in-cheek, but I, I do think that that is part of a good team, that we're not always going to agree. We're going to have some disagreements, I think it should be this way, you should, you think it should be that way. But at the end of the day, I think we all want what's best for the team, and we want what's best for the city. And so that, you know, that's why we have a majority, and that's why we, we go with the consensus or not. So, you know, we're, we're not always going to get what we want to have, but I think at the end of the day, we, we still move forward and know that we want to do what's best for the city of Dania Beach. I am going to start off with some praise for our HR department. That is, I am very excited. You guys don't know my, my love for health and wellness. They did an absolutely phenomenal job with, at IT Parker for the annual kickoff for Get Fit Dania Beach. I mean, the vendors always increased, the food is amazing. We had crepes, we had, we had smoothies, we, but most of all, we are able to bring all of our employees together in one united place and, and focus on health and wellness. So, and they always just do a beautiful job. So kudos, Linda, to you and your team for always doing a wonderful, wonderful job with that event. And directly following that, I went to a ribbon-cutting for the Blue Pearl Wellness Center. And that is a new senior wellness center in the city of Dania Beach that I just happened to get an invitation to. So what I will try to do is communicate a little bit more with my colleagues, because sometimes I think that we all just get the invitations and we don't. So I, I will share my, my ribbon-cuttings with, with, with the team, because I think it's better if we all can come out and support new businesses. This is a Latino business, and this woman, she's, it's run by a woman, and she's, she's dynamic, and they have transportation, they have zumba, they have dance classes, and so it's just another added element for our senior community, and we want to help them succeed. So kudos to the Blueness Wellness, Blue Wellness Center, Blue Pearl Wellness Center. I also want to thank our city manager for improving our communications with the mayor on the Move Initiative. We are moving forward with improving our communications with what's going on and around the city, our businesses. And so I think any way that we can work together to communicate better with our residents, everybody's like, "What's going on? What date is this happening? What date is that happening?" Then we have a, a way to make sure that we have had that added communication on to what's going on around town and what's going around in our city. I also have to give kudos to our Parks and Recreation Team, Kathy, and for the dinner at the hall. It was phenomenal, absolutely blew everyone's socks off, everybody, whether they were young or old or whatever. It was just a fantastically beautiful, elegant event, and I like that we have that diversity. I like that we can have light it up, where everybody's like all excited, and you have thousands of people, or you bring it to a more intimate event. I love my jewelry, my permanent jewelry, and I'm wearing it proudly. We could have, every, look at all, yeah, we all have our sisterhood bracelets, right? So it, it was just a great, great event, and I, I look forward to working with this team on so many different efforts. I do have one funding request for the Dan Marino Foundation. I did leave the sponsorship form in my office, but they now have sponsorship opportunities for Autism Awareness Family Sunday at the $1,000 level, $2,500 and $5,000 level. And I just wanted to see if the commission wanted to help to sponsor this Autism Family Awareness Sunday event for April 6, I believe it is. And I, I was requesting the $2,500 level, and wanted to see if I could get consensus from the commission to do that. $2,500 for the Dan Marino Foundation Family Autism Sunday.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to contribute $1,000 to what you're asking. This is very dear and near, they do such a great job, so if you, if they're okay receiving $3,500, I'd like to donate from my contingency to that as well.
We appreciate that, City Manager, I'm sure they won't turn it down. I mean, the, the sponsorship levels is $1,000, $2,500, and $5,000. So I just ask for the middle of the road, just because it could be something from all of us. And, you know, if you guys want to do $5,000, that, that's up to you. So then that's $4,000. The commission has agreed to give $2,500, and then the manager has, has graciously added $1,000 more than what that sponsorship was. Are you adding another $500 from your personal for that? $500, so we got $5,000. All right, so more, so we have commission contingency, we have city manager $1,000, and then we have individual $500 from the commission to make it $5,000. All right? We got it broke down. See, teamwork makes the dream work, and with that, my wonderful team and community, we are adjourned.